Let's go ahead and call our September board meeting. Tell order, we'll stand. Praise allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On our heads, our Father, we come unite and we thank you for our time together tonight, Lord, our fellowship, Lord, we just pray for our meeting and you'll bless it, Lord, that we make the wisest decisions for our community and for our children and for our teachers, Father. We pray for their safety as well, any of those that are playing football or any other sports tonight, we pray for their safety, for the Munkford football team as they travel Kentucky. We also pray for their safety as well. Lord, we pray for Clay and his wife, and we just pray for healing for his wife, Lord. We pray for the Kirk family, Lord, as they're dealing with a tragedy there, Lord, may you just bind them up and just heal them as well through this tragedy, Lord. Pray for our nations as well, Lord, that we'll come together and unite as American citizens, Lord, and that we'll just love our country and we'll love our Lord as well. May you just bless us, our time tonight, Father, and we just, may we glorify you in all that we do, in the name of Christ. Want to take a look at your agenda tonight? Why don't you take a look at your agenda? Take a motion to approve the agenda as presented. Mr. Jenkins, we have a second. I'm Mr. Lavelle, we have any discussion on that? A discussion, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Do we have any additions to the agenda? Yeah, oh, yes, so, let's go ahead, we need to, Dr. Thomas, remind, we need to elect our officers tonight, so our officers, so chairman, vice chair, and what is the other one, the legislative? Yeah, the legislative chair as well, the T L N representative, so let's add that to the agenda if y'all are okay with that, I'd like to add that, we'll do that right after, right after this, damn, so election of officers, we'll add that. Also want to add, I'm gonna add at the end of other visits, the delegates, we need to talk about delegates as well for the CSBA annual convention, so if I forget, remind me of that, so I'm gonna add that to, again, any other things to add to our agenda? All right. At that point, I just, you want to go ahead? Yeah, you want to do that?
Yeah, sure. So this is my two minutes of fame that I give once a year on here, so, and it is my fault, I forgot to put this on the agenda, I'm sorry, that's my bad on that. So, I'll open up the floor nominations, you know, we have to do this once a year, so I'll open up the floor nominations for chairman.
I nominate Blake Chakel.
Second? Did you get those? Okay. All right. Any other nominations? Okay, well that makes this easy. All those in favor of Blake being the chairman, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. One minute. Thank you, congratulations, you're doing a great job.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Well, I appreciate that, thank you, it's been a, it's been a pleasure to be able to serve you guys and I look forward to it as well for another year. We'll go ahead and then I'll open up the floor for the nominations of vice chair, we have a nomination for vice chair.
Richard Gray.
Richard Gray, we got a second, I'm Mr. Jenkins, so first by Mr. Eubank, second by Mr. Jenkins. Any other nominations for vice chair? If not, then all in favor say aye, Mr. Richard Gray for the vice chair. Any opposed?
Richard Gray, thank you. Yes, sir.
All right, well, open that up for the T L N representative, our, our, one who stays on top of our legislative stuff, so we have any nominations for T L N representative?
My favorite, Clay.
Nomination of Mr. Clay Lavelle, he's willing to do it. Second, Mr. Gray, we have any other nominations? That makes it a lot easier tonight, all right, well, then, all in favor of Mr. Lavelle being the T L N representative for the second year, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. All right, well, at this point, we'll turn it over to Dr. Byrd for other student of the month.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have two students with us tonight, and we will start with our elementary school student of the month, we have Mr. Tanner Cunningham, Tanner, you'll come up, if this golf, you mind coming up with us? He doesn't have to stand up here by himself. All right, so this is Tanner, he is a third grader.
She's a tripper.
I'm sorry. He is a third grader at Drummond Elementary, Tanner, hold on, you hold that so that I can all see you. Tanner was nominated for student of the month for his leadership, his outstanding attitude, and his being a positive role model for other students. Tanner has such a positive attitude, this is from his teacher, Ms. Marsha Roach, he has such a positive attitude, he shows empathy, kindness, and understanding to his classmates. Tanner is also very supportive towards his peers and demonstrates great self-discipline. So Tanner, we want to say congratulations to you for being our case.
Great job.
Good job, man, good job.
Appreciate it.
And we do have a middle school representative, but she's unable to be here tonight, so it's, if it's okay with you guys, I'll go away and recognize her next month, we'll have you for middle school next month. All right, so from high school, from Brighton High School, we have Miss Leah Finley, so Leah, if you'll come up with her presentation. Leah was selected for student of the month for her cooperation and work ethic, leadership, community involvement, considerate to others, assisting others in need, outstanding attitude, outstanding grades, and positive role model for other students. Leah Finley is reliable, hardworking, punctual, maintains excellent grades, actively participates in class, and shows leadership both in the classroom and in her roles within school organizations. Leah is student body president in our student council organization, a position which she was elected by her peers, she is a leader on the softball team and an officer in the HOSA organization. Leah consistently demonstrates dedication and responsibility, making her an outstanding role model, and after graduation, Leah plans to attend the University of Mississippi. So congratulations to you, Leah, thank you so much.
I want to know when Leah sleeps. That's a big old Leah, that's awesome.
And then we have our American Fidelity Teacher of the Month, so if I could have from Munkford Elementary, Dr. Coates here also, Ms. Jennifer Arconis, if you could come up. She is years of teaching, it says 23 plus, so she's been doing this for a short time anyway. She is a third grade self-contained teacher, as I said, at Munkford Elementary. Ms. Arconis has been dedicated to Munkford Elementary for over 23 years. While serving as a third grade teacher, she has been building, she has been, excuse me, a building level mentor, a grade chair, and helped numerous students excel to their fullest potential. She is a team player, always has a positive attitude, and encourages her colleagues to strive for excellence, so we want to say congratulations to Ms. Arconis for being. Told her she did not have to give a speech, we want to congratulate, congratulate her as well as our students who are here tonight. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Y'all, y'all can stay for the rest of the meeting if you are excited to do so, or you can stay.
Thank you.
Thanks, y'all.
Congratulations, great job.
Mr. Chris is hanging in there for the budget, that's why.
Board, go ahead, do we look at your consent agenda, do we have anything we want to pull out of the consent agenda tonight? If not, then do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion, please, favor. So we have a second, Mr. Lavelle, any discussion on that? Not all in favor say aye. Any opposed? That motion passed. Mr. McCain, you want to give us a policy committee report?
Yep, policy committee made a five in the annex, we only have one policy on there, it was student board representatives, and made just a couple of changes, but we recommend and approve that for first reading, and then we also reviewed section two, but nothing to pull out, and we will review section three next time, so anything in there you want to send it to Dr. Byrd, and we can address it.
Sounds good. So, as Mr. McCain said, 1.1021, we're looking at as the first reading there, that's in your folders tonight, that's on the student board representative, just changed a little bit of language there, so do we have a motion, this will be for the first reading, we have a motion to approve 1.1021, motion of Mr. Jenkins, second, Mr. Gray, any discussion on that? Not, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? That motion passed, and then we will take a motion to approve all of section two of the policy, we have a motion for section two of the policy, of our policy section, Mr. Lavelle, you got a motion, second, Mr. Eubank, any discussion on that, any changes? Very well, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? That motion passed, thank you, Mr. McCain. Dr. Byrd, you want to give us an instructional report?
Yes, sir. So in your online folder tonight, you will see a textbook adoption process that we will follow this year, we are adopting for our high schools PE and health, science, wellness, information technology, and advanced manufacturing. This is just for your information only, next month, we will have the committee names for you all to approve, that will be at the October meeting. Also, in your folder, third grade retention information has been placed, if you have any questions about that data, please let me know, you can give me a call, or however you'd like to do that, but I did want to give you a final update, once all the dust settled with the third grade retention, those are students who were in third grade and tested in the spring of 2025. Also, I'd like to share some T VAS, or, which is growth, as you know, with you all, that has recently been released, I've shared some of this information with you all at the work session, but I wanted to do it now in an open meeting so that the public could hear this, but our district's T VAS, which again is growth, our composite for 2425 was level five, very excited about that, we had nine of our schools with a T VAS composite at or above expectations, which is levels three, four, and five. The ACT growth composite was also at a five, very proud of that, and of our state-tested teachers, 68.9% were at or above expectations in student growth, meaning that they were also, their T VAS was levels three, four, and five. A few, a couple more stats to share with you, our growth measure percentiles, and this is growth measure percentiles, were in the top 25% in the state in these areas, I will not read them to you because you can read those on your own, but these are the areas where our growth measure percentiles is in the top 25%, and then in the top 10%, we have four areas, again, this was growth measure percentiles, seventh grade ELA in math, sixth grade social studies and ACT English, so we're very excited for the results that we had, and we're going to do it again and even better this year. This past Tuesday, board member, Mr. Gill invited us to attend an event at FedEx, and they shared information, I know that in our strategic plan, we are talking about adding aviation in our high schools, in one or more of our high schools, we have one of our high school principals here tonight, and we've had some discussion with him about it, but we had the opportunity Tuesday, a team of us went along with Mr. Gill to see a free curriculum called You Can Fly, and it's offered through AOPA Foundation, very good stuff, we are extremely interested, we're just in the exploratory phase of that right now, but look for that to hopefully be coming soon, our goal is August of 2026, so stay tuned, but exciting things, and Mr. Gill, I want to say thank you for sharing that information with the superintendent and allowing us to attend that with you. And then the last thing I have Tuesday, we have a special group, this, these are some of the teachers who are in the Tipton County Retired Teachers Association, they came Tuesday, and Mr. Harvey Witherington, our CTE director, took them around to the very high schools, and they were able to see all of the great things that are going on, as you all know, at Brighton and Lyderyn-Cavendish High School, and I just want to say, you know, these, these folks, that's a lot of experience in Tipton County schools that you see there, and we certainly want to thank them for their years of service and for their ongoing support of Tipton County schools, but hats off to this group, they, they were fun, I didn't get to go with them, but I got to talk to them a little bit before, I was at the FedEx event with Mr. Gill, but we were excited to show them around, and as I look up there, I can see a few of them were my teachers, and some of you that are from Tipton County probably had some of those folks too, but we want to thank them for their interest and their ongoing support. Mr. Chair, that concludes my report unless someone has a question for me.
Thank you, Dr. Byrd, any questions, Dr. Byrd?
I did see a lot of the current teachers posting pictures with their teachers.
Absolutely.
On social media, that was pretty neat.
Yeah, for sure, yeah, it's funny, when I came in to speak to them, just to kind of greet and visit with them before we left for FedEx, my high school English teachers in that group, this Mary Ann Smith, she's on the end, and I said, I don't know if you remember, babe, because you know, it's been a few years since I was in high school, and it was crazy because she remembered me, and she said, didn't you work at a grocery store? And I said, yes, ma'am, and she remembered things that I did not anticipate that she would remember, and it was just very neat that she, that she remembered, and it made it special for me, I was like, gosh, she remembered, so that was.
Yeah, she was.
She was a good teacher.
I had her.
She was.
She was my last English teacher.
Yeah.
Is that when she retired?
No, she wasn't regular then.
Eric, what up? That aviation thing, that's pretty neat, what does that include, or what is that, is that just teaching mechanics and fundamentals, how does that work?
Can you go back to that one slide?
Sure can.
And this is, this is, I love this slide, but, and she can probably speak to more of the educational piece than I could, a lot of that I want to skip out on, run out the door, but this, this slide down here on the bottom, it represents all the different facets involved with aviation, and that curriculum and that course, it hits all these different facets, so, and I'll give you a perfect example, one of our interns this summer that we had out there, he may not necessarily be, this person may not necessarily be able to fly, but he's found a niche at the airfield that he really likes because he gets to control everybody that flies. So there's a bunch of different opportunities there, and the industry, they spoke to us a lot about that, there's going to be a huge, huge, huge deficit in the near future, and I will say, hasn't this invite out broadcasted it far and wide, and locally, Tipton County represented well there, and I would say this, and I'll tell you this, because we had conversation afterwards, but you all are well supported by Tennessee Aeronautics, that's the T doc division of, so I think that'll be a great relationship for you all to figure out how to get this thing pushed across the line, now we just got to find the right people to teach.
You can do it either way, we can make it genuine, or we can, we can go the CTE route, that's, those are some conversations that we're going to have to have as we plan this out for hopefully August of 2026, but, but there's a pilot track, there's also a drone track, so there's a mix, and, but those are some decisions, but, but they talked a lot about, you know, it's not just about who wants to be a pilot, there are so many other opportunities and jobs that go along with aviation that people don't really think about.
They did a, they did a demo, and I learned physics that day and didn't know that I learned physics, you remember this, did y'all use, we were separated, but they take you over, we did this demo, and you used cardboard and glue, like my favorites, and we built this thing, and it was all about the physics, and then he was like, so what we taught you was physics, and he started naming all the laws that we did, and I was like, oh, you got me.
Yeah.
Right, because I didn't want to learn physics, that's not what I came for.
Well, and the curriculum is, it's every lesson for the entire year, it's laid out, and they said, the way it's designed, you don't skip lessons, it's sequential, you go in that order, you include every lesson, so it seems like a great opportunity, we didn't get to view the whole curriculum, but I think it is definitely something worth our time to look into as a district.
Is this going to be affiliated with FedEx?
Not necessar, no, not necessarily, it was at their facility, at their, I forgot the name of the place where we were, Fed Ex, Fed Experience.
Experience Center, I think?
Something like that.
So the AOPA is the largest organized pilots association ever in the world, and it's a nonprofit, blah, 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 but all of the airlines contribute to it, and in doing so, they forecast the industry, and so that's what the big push was to get the schools to come to, we got to fix the problem from the ground up.
Well, that's like all the other industries.
Can I ask this one question? So, you know, and you know I'm going to ask this question, so we talked about curriculum, right, we talked about that this is something Tennessee's pushing that we're looking at right now, correct? So has it been approved by the, you know, we can't, you know, curriculum has to be approved through the state board, so is that?
There's no textbook, that's a curriculum.
Or not curriculum?
It's not a textbook, it's a series of lessons.
So we wouldn't have a problem with that, they, we could get that through probably.
I would imagine, so we saw two sample lessons from, from the curriculum.
Okay.
One was the physics lesson on building the contraction with the hot glue and the fan, and the other was using tissue paper, duct tape, hey, what was the little machine that blew the?
Hot air.
We made hot air balloons, so that, by curriculum, I mean a series of lessons.
Okay, that makes sense, you know, we had that, and y'all remember, I've talked to you about this before, we had that issue with Ford, right, so when Ford first came, they were like, oh no, we have this curriculum, we want you to use these books to teach these classes on, you know, mechanical stuff and the battery stuff, you know, they have all this, and we're like, I mean, has the state seen that, because we can't teach anything that hadn't gone through the approval process, right? So they're like, oh no, who do we talk to there? That, none of that had been done, so you know, it sounds like these folks are a whole lot more into it than what, when they, when Ford came to the state.
So they are already, it helped my memory, because that was Tuesday, but I believe they said they are already in 25 high schools in Tennessee, some, some in Shelby, some very close to us.
Wasn't the curriculum correlated, I know it was cor, the only part I remember was correlated to like the federal, the federal regs for flying and stuff, but I think it was correlated to educational pieces too, but I can't, I don't, you would know better than me, but.
Yes, they talked, they talked about that, but they mentioned, I believe the number was 25, it is already in, not, I don't believe it was 25 districts, I believe it's 25 high schools currently, so I think we would be okay, but we would, of course, you know, do our due diligence.
Yeah, that's great.
And research.
Do you see, do you see advanced, is this little, is it?
Yes, sir, we've already been talking, I've got a teacher in mind, she's already on board, so.
Cool.
And I'm not trying to, I hope I'm not messing anything up here, but you guys have a partner, but to, Covington has airport too, and, and we would want to make sure that that was a, put together, but I think a lot of the curriculum, you don't have to go to the airport, it'd be cool to go to the airport.
Yeah, and they talked, we asked about the cost, you know, other than the instructor, which would be a cost that we would have to absorb, the curriculum is completely free, they just asked that we not share it, you know, that it, you don't post the lessons online, et cetera, but it is free, and they said the supplies cost about $1,500 a year to replenish the consumable supplies, so it doesn't seem like an enormous cost, other than the teacher, that would be a cost.
Well, that could be huge over the halfway of students, like the one student you had down there, I mean, would not have maybe thought otherwise, you know, a lot of people just think aviation, flying, and it's so anymore.
And it's so much more, and we already have drones in our high schools, so that, that's something that we already have possession of, and Dr. Jones, who was with me, actually won the free drone, they gave away a classroom drone, and she won, she said, I never win anything, and they called her ticket number, she won the free drone, so I'm sure that'll show up in one of the schools, I probably shouldn't say that out loud, they'll be all calling her, saying we'd love to try, yeah, we'll have to have a giveaway, but any other questions for me? I think it's a great opportunity for the district if we can make everything.
That's great. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Gill, for bringing that up, that's great.
It's awesome.
Thank you, Dr. Byrd. Operations report, I talked to Mr. Fields, he ran out to go play athletic director, and he didn't have anything, he said his stuff could wait till next month, so we're going to pick that up next month, no operations report this month, as far as, Mr. Bennett, turn it over to Capitol Projects.
Good evening, guys. So I'll start off with a picture of progress, if you will, and again, like I spoke last time, they were discussing our exit strategy of this, and as you go, now you're going to see that as you tour around, you're seeing it's definitely shaping up to be something we can really hold hope that we are going to hit this deadline, so really no reason to believe that we will not, I'll give you some, some updates from Ron here, but as you can tell, the playground, what you got to hear is this, if you heard Dr. Thomas discuss, this will be the claw of the playground of elementary, it's going to be a cool place for the kids to be able, especially after events like yesterday, remind us that we do that, we can't take safety, you know, to play at all, so give you another safety feature that is incorporated into the new school, so, again, coming right along, and this right here, if you, if you hadn't been, this here is going to be like a Rayada amphitheater type seating area, where there will be plants on the top, but the, you'll be able to sit on this wall, there'll be more official turf, if you will, in this area, so the spade may occur just there cleaning all the time for the staff to get out and teach. So, some of the, some of the numbers from the job site, Mr. Ron's clean, he graciously offered me these facts, that always fun to see the progress on paper, shooting, both retention ponds are completely finished and grassed, and guys, that's, every bit of the stormwater on the building goes to the retention ponds, it doesn't just disperse out into the yard, it doesn't just, again, code requirements, but it's going to be nice now that having all the water dumped out at the side of the building, as you'll notice at a lot of our others, that we've got to do something about here soon, so, all 118 HVAC units are installed and operating, so that was 118, so 10 years from now, somebody will get to discuss how we're going to replace that one, so we'll have fun then. Light fixtures are 75% complete in both, and he's saying on the entire building, well, two schools combined were 75% complete on the light fixtures, roof is complete on the entire building, main building, where they're currently working on the dugout concession stands at the softball field, the epoxy floors, which are in your bathrooms, they're 97 complete, 97% complete, after this coming Monday, all cabinets for the entire building, that's both schools, will be on site, and they're rapidly putting those in, I mean, they're not sitting in stores very long, so they'll have those in soon, paint is 99% in middle school, and the elementary school, they're at 50% on paint, all plumbing fixtures are on site, middle school's 99% trimmed out in plumbing, and they just started trimming out the plumbing at the elementary school, and the hardscapes, hardscapes and sidewalks are right at 80%, the sod is about 50%, if you will, this coming, starting on the 15th, we're expecting middle school bleachers, softball bleachers, polishing the concrete, which will be throughout all the hallways, all your common hallways in the building will be polished concrete, so that'll all start Monday, along with the awnings and the metal panels, the front entrance, and then the last load of cabinets gets started on the 15th, so it's fun to walk around job site and see all the work and the planning that are here on October the 20th, something, we're fixing to start putting furniture in this thing, and start working all the way across, we were fortunate to take the middle school teachers through here, and all the excitement from them, that this is really happening, and, you know, the, I don't want to go with all, just, everything's new, I mean, because they've come from old buildings, and then they've been in, you know, temporary situations for two years, so, all of this, is this really going to happen, do you really think we're going to get in there, you can really feel it in the hugs and the tears, you know, they were real, so it was cool, so that one's getting, we get to start hashing out some of the details as far as the logistics and the traffic, and, and Sharon Beasley, Sheriff Beasley took his, took part of his team through this past week, just to get a kind of, familiar with the layout and what to expect, you know, out there, if and when they ever have to come on site, so it's, it's coming along very well. As far as, as far as the super school, does anyone have any questions regarding that project?
The furniture is on track.
Yes, ma'am, it's on track, and they, and they make us as though, per contract, they help us facilitate FFME, so they help with the scheduling and with, so they communicated very, very closely with them to make sure that y'all are going to be here on these dates, and, you know, if they have some batch that can come our way, that they'll provide a storage area, you know, for them to, to offload, you know, furniture, but the plan is, it comes in, it goes to the classroom, like, it's going in and going in place, and hopefully by Thanksgiving, we'll all be saying, thank, you know, how thankful we are for landing a new school.
Have we got far enough down the road to have some sort of plan as far as teachers getting in, set up, that kind of thing?
So, and that's one of the things that we shared with them when we gave them the tour, because some of them asked that same question, we're going to be decorating during Christmas, and my answer was only if you want to. My answer was only if you want to, so, because you could have plenty of time before that to do it, so. There are gonna be time for them to get that, as it's cleared in sections to get things in, they can start coming in after hours and working on their rooms and doing stuff like that. I will say this, one of the things that, uh, uh, you know, this is brand new paint, right? You know, it's one thing putting duct tape on a forty-year-old wall. It's another thing when this bad boy is just brand new, so. We in the district are gonna splurge for command strips for the whole school. Uh, so that we can control how those things are attached to the wall. So we're gonna get, you know, command strips, we're gonna pay for all those, and then get them to everybody so that they can hang, you know, have those clean hangs up there for all of them, uh, so that we keep those walls nice and clean, you know, so.
Good idea.
Along those same lines, I, I'm gonna stick my neck out, and I really don't wanna do this, because I have a wife and a daughter that are teachers now.
Yeah.
But that first couple of days of them getting into their rooms is a real pain. And there's a lot of heavy lifting, so I would propose, if we could organize it, a day or two where we would offer up some heavy lifting for those that would want to volunteer, but organize it where we're not.
No, a hundred percent.
I've already offered.
But all the furniture and everything, uh, Lincoln's is gonna help us, they're, they're gonna do all the heavy lifting.
I hear that every year from my wife, and I end up pulling in about four or five hundred pounds of junk, and so.
My first thing is, why do you have four or five hundred pounds of junk? But the second half would be, uh, now, I will say this too, we all, including myself, learned a big old lesson. Well, multiple lessons, but one from that tornado. And that was, man, all that stuff that's yours personally is not gonna be covered. I mean, they will cap that amount, and they'll say, no, we'll give you this amount, split it. I mean, the more stuff you have in there that is your personal stuff, it will not be, and that's one of the things we were talking about when we were doing the tour, was that, you know, put stuff in here you want, but also be careful, you know, if, if, if this is real precious to you, and your grandmother gave you this forever ago and said, keep it forever, I wouldn't put it in the classroom, you know, so, uh, but you're exactly right, because that, that last couple of days, there's a lot, it's a lot more than.
I have a double dose now.
That's right.
We just need to know we're gonna move the smirri cakes tub.
Man, I can tell you. Let me say this, if I'm instructed to move it, I'll put it wherever it belongs. Yeah, we did find it, though. It is, it is still around.
That's where I learned, big Clifford, Big Red Dog, whatever it's called.
I'd like to propose also that, um, that, you know, that we have a workday at some point, when, when, you know, setting things up and helping and all that. We will definitely let y'all know, because it'd be cool if as many of you could show up, and we help those folks get set up and get their roads and help paint stuff. That'd be, that'd be pretty neat.
Hunter, is there anything that we're waiting on?
No, sir. I haven't been told of any, any logistics. Everything's either on site, or it hasn't been given any, I mean, we're waiting on furniture, but it's been secured, it's been taken care of, we have no reason to believe it's not coming. I mean, the floors are all, I mean, carpets in, LVTs in, in the middle school for that much, they're work, they're currently working through the elementary school. Now, all of it's on site. I haven't, I mean, Ron's a sh- he's a straight shooter, the gentleman that's running the show, I mean, he'll, he'll let me know if he was concerned. The one thing he was, he had issues with, and that was that, the, a brick color, and he finally got his, and he, and I trust you, he was representing us well. He was, he was sharing our need for brick whenever he was handling it. I walked up to a very firm conversation. And pack up. So, so anyways, it was, um, but it's, again, guys, I, you know, never wanna go through it again, but I will tell you, very honored to have worked with a team that we've been fortunate enough to work with for this one. They took, they took the task seriously. I look forward to the ribbon cutting and sharing my appreciation with them, and the details, and, you know, how they really took our community and really heard our need and to get our kids back into a safe place, so. Is there any other questions that, that don't pertain to the new construction side?
I had one, one last little question, because I, my last two projects, we had the, this is where my piece of burden was, because it looked pretty when I got done, but it was the technology. And I just didn't know, how heavy is the technology in the elementary in the middle?
Well, that man right there can tell you. I mean, we've been, we've been, uh, MCC, who we've been contracted with some stuff, but he's helping guide that process, uh, and, and the installations, um. They were, one of the things, so, what was that, last week, they said, hey, by the way, and so I contacted Kevin real quick to get him to take a look at it, but, you know, all these HVAC systems are like connecting to wireless. You know, we don't have any other buildings like that. I mean, they're all connected, I mean, this is the new stuff, right?
We have them where you can monitor them, but these apparently have to be connected and stay connected.
Yep, because they, they tried to set, they tried to set them, and they, uh, reset on them, because they weren't, so.
About everything now, they, from generators to HVAC.
Hundred percent. But it's gonna be, you know, between smart board in every room, wireless, oh, yeah.
I mean, it's impressive, I mean, because it is, it's all, it's built to every new code, energy code, seismic code, fire code, you name it. I mean, if you haven't been, whenever you do go, and I do encourage you to call me, and we'll go take a tour, I mean, after four o'clock is definitely the best time. I'll tell you, we find good luck during that three-thirty, with, they're starting to filter out. Four o'clock, you know, the, there's a handful of people, you know, they're working, and they'll be there all night. But the heavy, heavy overhead stuff is, we can get in at four o'clock pretty easily, but, um, the natural light that comes in is pretty impressive, as far as energy bills, and you wanna talk about the future.
Light in there, right?
Yeah, I mean, it's really, you walk down a middle, you walk down a middle school hallway, and it's, you don't need a light for that.
I'm curious, when was Brighton High? When was that built?
Ninety-six, nineteen ninety-six.
That's, and you know, you know, it looks fairly new compared to Mumford and Covington, but just a big change in codes and things since then.
Oh, yeah. When you think about what, Aetoka, what's, what, what do we say, Matt? Aetoka's like eighteen, sixteen years, seventeen years old? That's our newest building, it's seventeen years old. Yeah, a hundred percent.
Capital, as far as other capital projects, guys, we'll, we'll be clearly, had a few financial things that you were, you guys are clearly working, navigating through, and I think once there's some answers, some breathing room there, we will be presenting this in October. They were gonna be hitting you with the, some, some, some dollars, but let you di- let you digest, you know, what we currently have going on, but. The needs are still there, the rest of the school system needing air conditioners, and we're needing cafeteria tables and some updates, and so as we, you know, take much time to appreciate what we've got going on over here, we've got a lot of, a lot of hard work still ahead of us, and a lot of dollars to still churn, you know, to keep the rest of the school system, you know, where it needs to be, so.
And, and remember, let me, let me remind y'all, at the October work session, Hunter and I will present the capital projects, uh, piece for this year, based on the, the two million that was budgeted for capital projects, right? That's what we're gonna present, and that, and it'll be a draft. So you look at it and go, yeah, I like that, no, I don't, I think this is more whatever. That's fine, that's what we're gonna present to you. And then after, you know, we feel like we found our footing on this other piece, I didn't, that was almost literal, wasn't it? After we found our footing on that, um, then, don't be surprised, I mean, if I come back before y'all and start asking for more stuff. Because if, if we had free rein, you know, to use our fund balance like we were told, and we can, uh, and we can recoup all that, then I'm gonna be asking for money. And it's for more capital projects, bonuses, stuff like that. I mean, if we had the money to do it then, we had the money to do it now, so, um, just, but I'll, you know, as promised, I will wait until, you know, we do feel good about that before I ask, but, you know, I don't want anybody to be surprised when I start asking.
And the train won't slow down.
Yeah, it's hopefully time to get on other things.
Hopefully so. I mean, we continue to, to, to pray for those, but yes, we're close, guys. We're close to the end of this one, and I'm excited, so. I appreciate it. That, really, that concludes me at the moment. Does anybody have any questions?
Kevin, you had a question?
Sorry, I was just gonna say, we're shooting for October first to start putting the network stuff in. I talked to Central today, who's gonna be hanging all the access points for the Wi-Fi, uh, MCC's finishing up the cabling. Everything's looking good. We got all the equipment in, ready to go.
Cool.
I'd love that. Appreciate it.
Thank y'all. Thanks, all right.
Do our financial report? We want it only Mr. Will Beasley?
Do you want to take a ten-minute break? I mean, I got a lot.
No.
Good evening, everybody. I wanna go ahead and ask Mr. Brian Crowson to come up and present his SSO. This is the, uh, VHS softball district.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Brian Crowson, and I'm principal at Brighton High School. Uh, tonight, I have one SSO for your approval. Uh, that is our softball district club is, uh, looking to get approved. Uh, this SSO is, uh, has been prepared and submitted. Uh, paperwork required by law, policy, and practice to operate as an SSO for Tipton County Schools, uh, in the twenty-twenty-six school year. Uh, that paperwork has been reviewed, verified, and approved thus far. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I request that this SSO be approved to our operation in Tipton County for the ensuing school year.
Thank you, Mr. Crowson. We have a motion to approve the VHS SSO. We got a motion by Mr. Jenkins, taken by Ms. Reed. We have any discussion on that?
Is this a new club?
No, sir, they, they came into existence last year.
I said, I was looking at the notice, they're still awaiting approval for the two tax forms. That just takes a.
They started the process last year, it's just been swelled up.
Will, good on it? Everything's good, all there? All in favor, uh, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. Thank you, Mr. Crowson. Appreciate it.
Alright, so the other areas of business we have, uh, so if you look in your packets under, uh, I wanna say it's, uh, TCA guidance for audit contract, so per Tennessee Code Annotated forty-nine dash two dash one twelve, an annual audit is required for all schools handling funds. And additionally, Tennessee Code Annotated twelve dash three dash five oh nine mandates that professional services be awarded based on competence and integrity, not competitive bidding. Uh, so the contract to audit accounts must be finalized by September thirtieth to allow proper planning and execution during the school year. So, Mr. Chairman, my request is that the board allow the appropriate individuals to execute a contract with ATA. They're the ones that's done the audit for the internal school funds for the past two years. I believe it was Whitehorn and Takersly prior to audit the internal schools and the USDA funds for fiscal year twenty-six in the amount of sixty-three thousand five hundred dollars for the audit fee, five thousand two hundred fifty dollars for the USDA proceed- procedures, and any additional travel costs that they require, and then also I wanna note, this is a five percent increase from last year.
And where are they, uh?
ATA, they actually have an office right up here on the square.
We done, I, I checked with Billy too, I mean, he's been, everybody's been really happy with them. I mean, they're really easy to work with, they give great feedback. I mean, thus far, they've been good.
I had like a team of seven come in here and knock out the eleme- the elementary schools in like two days.
Oh, that's good, because the former took them in.
Correct.
Yeah, like you, do we have a motion then to approve the, uh, for them to execute the contract for ATA, and most of them, as you bank? We have a second. Second, Mr. Jenkins, any discussion on that? Any questions? If not, then all in favor, say aye. Uh, any opposed? Motion passed?
Alright, so you have another, uh, file in your, or folder in your packet. I wanna say it's the internal school fund budgets. So if you, you will find the references to the Tennessee Code Annotated forty-nine dash two dash one-ten again, and policy two point nine as well, both of which pertain to the internal school budgets and student activity funds. So each year, each principal, they serve as the manager of their school's internal general fund, and they are required to submit an annual budget for your approval. Uh, these budgets outline how funds will be allocated for the fiscal year, and we, our team has reviewed each submission, and we ensure compliance with board policy and confirm that all budgets are balanced. And each, a copy of each of these budgets are in your packets. So, Mr. Chairman, my request this evening is that the board make a motion to approve each principal's budget as submitted for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six.
Thank you. Uh, do we have a motion to approve each one of the, these principal's budgets for each mission? Motion by Mr. Edwards, do we have a second? Second, Mr. Gray. Any discussion on this, or questions?
Do they bring it before the board, if they need to make a amend, or do they handle that internally?
Tip, tip slip, they do not. I think they handle that internally.
Do they have one form or something that they fill out, like a, a standard form that they fill out on their budgets and stuff, or each one of them's different?
They should, it should all be like a standard form that they go by. Uh, some of them may do it a little differently than others.
Yeah.
As you know, each school will have a different dynamic.
What happens if they just blow through their budget?
We're ultimately responsible.
Who is?
Principal.
Well, the principal and then the board.
The principal. I mean, yeah, but, but the, but the way those things are put in place, like, well, y'all just, y'all just, because that's a good question. The approval you just gave with the continual audit group that we're using right now, they'll catch it. I mean, there's so many lines of, of, uh, control, I guess, that will help catch that. Uh, but, I mean, ultimately, you know, by law, principals in charge of that budget and, uh, what goes on in that building. So, yes, are y'all responsible as well? Absolutely. But dude over there in the red shirt is all, is responsible for his budget. Yeah, there's nobody else up here with the red shirt. So, uh, but no, it, it, it goes there and, and then moves on, but, uh, yeah.
But I don't know that, I think most of your bookkeepers, principals, I mean, they keep a close watch on what they're spending.
Hundred percent.
I know when I was in that role, we got, I mean, so I don't think it's really a big issue.
It, it usually hasn't been, like, you know, I was, when I was the principal of Wright Middle for ten years, um, every time that audit visit came, it was myself and the bookkeeper, right? We sat in there and, and you, it was, it was fairly thorough. I mean, they were keeping up with everything, so.
So do we ever look at what the actual budget, I mean, what the actual end of the year was versus where they budgeted, just to see how they, how well they budgeted?
They, some, some of them, we get like a monthly budget report, uh, but usually by the end of the year, we, we have a final budget for each school.
I got one dumb question. Where's the money come from?
Fundraisers.
Snack car.
Plus, and, and the money, there's a lot of it through us, but, yeah.
Because I'm, I, and I understand, uh, you know, the, the SSOs and the stuff, is that, is that part of this?
No.
And then, so where's it reflected in here, the, I see all the, the outgoing, I'm just looking, and I'm, maybe I'll, I'll pull up a different one. I'm looking where the money was, you know, what was the beginning balance? I see general fund.
So, general fund could be, I mean, we, I know we write checks to the internal schools for library allocations, uh, staff appreciation money, several different things. BEP is a big one that we write at the beginning of each year.
But it doesn't show, a- and again, I'm not, I don't carry it, I'm sure I better understand, but it doesn't show necessarily where you're funding, where, so I, I know, for instance, athletics draws a lot of money from gates and stuff like that, but where would that be reflected on here? A projection, or is it not? Am I asking too many questions?
This is gonna be, that's, that's restricted, I mean, athletics.
Which, which school are you looking at?
Uh, any of them. I, I, I'd look at Austinville Elementary, and I, I just looked at Baldwin High School, and I'm gonna go say.
Yeah, look at, I, I agree, look at, look at Brighton High.
If you're Brighton High, like, like, all the athletics lineups, where does that income come from, that revenue?
You just live when you had a chance.
So athletics, like he mentioned, a lot of that, most of that comes from gates.
Okay.
That money is used to pay for officials' travel, uh, uniforms, that's one thing. Most of our other expenses come out of our SSOs.
And that's gonna be the same with some of these clubs and stuff, too.
Yes, but all of our clubs are self-funded.
Art, ag, yeah.
Now, we do, there, uh, we do get money from the board for art, official arts, broadcasting.
Band, the band, choir.
So I'm just looking at, from an audit standpoint, that's why I asked my question, because I know how that, how that's worked, but, do they go to the auditor, will he go to your, come to your school and hang out with you, and then you explain where the monies and stuff came from, and, okay?
Yeah, that's what I was talking about.
It's just, it was confusing.
And they say, I want to see this, pull that, pull that, pull that, come back in.
Random stuff.
So you're using traditional, or not traditional, but historical data to come up with your budget?
Yes, we, each, each club, each coach, each club, they, they present to us a budget for the year, and they go off what they spent last year pretty much, and what they're expected to bring in this year, whether it's gates, fundraising, and then that's what that comes from.
And you roll over year to year?
Certain funds do depend on this, like, we have restricted funds, accounts, and we have other accounts that roll, if we don't use it, they roll over to new funds. But like, let's say football, whatever that football account is, at the end of the year, it rolls over, that same amount rolls over to the next year.
Well, that's why I was looking down the column, getting balance.
Yeah, there'll be, I mean, there'll be an audit year, there'll be audit, you know, audit at the school where you can have write-ups too. I still remember a write-up, I got a write-up, we had Whiteout on something, and Dewey, Mr. Dewey, man, he, he hit us hard on that one. So, I mean, I still remember that, it was there, and then, yeah.
I mean, the big thing now is we, receipts, because there's so much money coming in and out, our teachers and coaches, they got receipts, a lot of, you know, we have to have receipts. If you go purchase something, and the auditor comes, they have to go present receipts.
Purchase orders, you know, have to take the fold, that's always the process, yes.
Signatures.
Billy, do, do you guys get to see the other information? And I'm not trying to be difficult, all this isn't a budget to me, because I don't know where the money's coming from. And, and it's a great thing, I mean, I'm sure they use it forever, but when I looked at it, I was like, this is just money out. So like, do you guys have a document where you see what the numbers are that he's projecting on income? That's all, I'm just curious. I know how the audit stuff works, unfortunately.
Any other questions?
Thank you again.
One more question.
Motion on the floor, we, all in favor of, of, of approving each one of these budgets at schools, say aye. Any opposed? Have a second.
So, in light of, like, everything else going on, at two fifty-seven PM, we were notified that the wire from the insurance settlement has been made in the amount of fifteen million, three hundred and twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred and nine dollars, sixty-nine cents. Since this settlement has been received, we are now we're now able to pursue the other means of disaster relief funding to fund the gap. Spoke with Dr. Combs earlier, and he is still confident that we would get that funded.
What's that put our gap at now, roughly?
What, about nine or ten billion?
About ten. I feel, I feel good about it. This was, this was the document I need, so I feel good.
Move forward.
I feel good. I took a full breath for the first time.
Two years.
That is correct, yeah. Billy, I'll just say this, Billy sent me a text, said it just hit the bank, and all, the only response I could, like, muster up was, I love you. That's about all that would come out, so, but, but yeah, so I, I feel very confident with that being in place, that, that we're good to keep rolling. I think the other process is good, I just, I needed that piece of puzzle put in place so that we can move forward, so. Let's keep us a bit larger for a little while. Yeah, absolutely.
Great job.
Other than the monthly financial pack, reports being in your packet, Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Any questions?
That wasn't terrible.
Good job, Will.
Are we taking ten minutes right now?
It's still daylight, we're going, baby. I might get home before though.
I probably should, yeah. So, so yeah, the chairman just reminded me, so we, uh, alright, so, so the agreement that we signed, you know, y'all gave us the authority to sign, to sign in the last meeting, right? Didn't stray from that, as a matter of fact, it was pretty much the same thing. There was some legal jargon that, like you were saying earlier with the others, that they, that they're going to put in there, right? But pretty much, it, it was what it was. There's one thing, though, that I want to remind y'all. Part of the contract talks about the stipulation that, this is going to sound like I'm in fourth grade, so I apologize, that we're not going to talk bad about anybody. Believe it or not, that's in the contract, and we didn't put it in there, I'm just saying. The contract basically says that we will not disparage anything like that, the group and whatever, and here's the deal, I mean, we got the money. I'm not thinking anybody's leaving here tonight, you know, posting or sending out a flyer to talk about how bad somebody is, that's not, but that was in the contract. So I do feel like that's important that I tell everybody that, you know, if you, if you had plans later on to, to bash our old insurance company, contract says you can't do that, even though we do have the money now, I still wouldn't do it. So, I just want to let you know that was in there, but other than that, I mean, it's, it's pretty much straightforward. In, in the contract, it talked about, just like y'all said, well, we can, that I can continue to fill that gap, get that gap money by other means with no repercussions, that's in there, that we can, you know, move forward and do all that, we wanted to make sure that was in there. And it said honor before the fifteen, which, this is before, and we already got it, so that's good. And that was basically the jargon. I mean, it was, we signed it, LGIP CEO signed it, and the county mayor signed it. Because remember, in our old policy, we were co-insured with the county. So, even though nothing applied to them at all in the contract, we were co-insured with them, so they had them sign it, which is fine. I mean, they, they met Tuesday, and voted like, you know, eighteen to nothing, right? Yeah, it was unanimous to sign it, so they did. But anyway, we should be good, and I'm hoping October, you know, to have another good report for y'all as far as, you know, where we are at that time, so.
Very good.
Yep.
Thank you.
Appreciate y'all's diligence.
Thank you. Appreciate y'all's patience.
Well, I'm glad for you. I know this has been tough on you, and it's been tough on Blake too, and us too, but not, not nearly as much as you two.
Well, thank you, thank you.
Much appreciated.
I'm gonna throw Hunter, Billy and his team in there too, those folks.
Oh, absolutely.
I'm, I'm, I'm telling you, we, we, me and Hunter have talked about, you know, one day we may just take the show on the road. We've seen some stuff that I never thought existed, so, but yeah, it's been, been a big deal, so thank you for saying that, I appreciate that. But I'm just glad that everything's good, we're getting these kids and these, and these employees, everybody in these new buildings, and, you know, it's just, it's just going to be nice. I, I can't wait. I, I can't wait to see their faces. It's going to be exciting.
It'll be tears.
Oh, hundred percent. Yep.
Thank you, just basically for that financial report. As far as other business, I do want to bring up the delegates for the TSBA annual convention.
Hey, will you hit the remote? There's one more picture I want to show you. I'm sorry, I want to show you this one. So, this, the infamous Nick Bringle took this picture for us. So I just want to show you, when some people, you know, they're saying that they would wade through, mm, for you, okay. Your maintenance supervisor actually, well, he didn't wade through it, he paddled through it. This is the lagoon behind Drummond's Elementary School, that the, the city has basically told us, hey, we can't continue to keep it up, you're going to do it. So, we've been doing that, and he is, I believe, this is today, um, did you, no, it was the same clothes, man.
I changed, buddy.
So, Hunter is paddling out, there's a baffle, something stopped up out there, that's new. He did tell me he has like shoulder gloves and hip waders for tomorrow, that he has to go get something to try to get something unstuck. But that is the dedication of y'all's maintenance supervisor right there. I just had to show you that.
I called him.
So, thank y'all.
I called him. He didn't answer. But he text me right back, I'm in the lagoon. I said, don't drop your phone.
Well, hey, if you, if you've noticed, you took your glasses off, didn't you?
I know.
Did you? Because I looked carefully, he didn't have his glasses on, I said, he's worried you're going to drop it. Okay, yeah. But yeah, so there's the proof that he wasn't like ghosting you, he was really doing that.
I think Nick's over there filming this one, he's just waiting.
He was waiting. As a matter of fact, whenever I was right there, all I heard was, I can't miss this opportunity. Did he have a rope tie for the boat? I wouldn't have trusted him.
That actually brings up something that probably, we, so we, we have to maintain that now?
Well, we do.
Or have we been doing?
Well, we have, so the city of Monford's always been our operator. They had a changeover in staff, and they went from three operators to one. And then they, now they're capacity, I know they're working with the token, the town, town token in Brighton. So their workload apparently is a bit heavy, so we have worked through them, we've got a new operator that actually is coming on board to keep us compliant and all that. And I've got two guys going this month to be up for handler training, if you will, so they'll know exactly what they're doing. What they'll do is they'll read the, your chlorine levels and some different things on site, and then we'll have, we'll have someone else signs off for the state docs. Maybe one day we can get someone on staff for that, but it's not uncommon to outsource that signature to some of larger municipalities, someone small like ourselves, but. But it's, I mean, I've met, trust me, I've met with engineers, I've met with state, I've met with, apparently we've got a great lagoon. It's just, we had our bioprene that we just replaced this year, just brand new, it had some, it was original to the lagoon. It, we had a solid issue like as far as, but, and I say that, talking to the ones that have been in this role for the years past, with the limits that Monford asks, we could send Ross Suich to the top of it, and it wouldn't matter, they can absorb it. However, whenever they calibrate our sample and whatnot, we've got to make them blind, so.
Are we, so, we sending that lagoon to Monford's lagoons? Is that the way, or we going straight to the creek?
We go straight, we go to the top of it, in Monford's force main.
Okay, but we are sending Monford's super system, is that what you're saying? Okay.
We have, we have a contract with the city of Monford to use their force main.
So do we, when we have to maintain, is that, is that cost will come on us? Is that correct? When this thing goes down, we have to make that on us, right?
That is correct, yes, that is correct.
So that's something we need to be.
Like that aeriator, then he's going to the further floor tomorrow, and we'll need some kind of contingents there, some kind of dollars sitting aside one day. Remember I tell you this thing?
How much does that cost?
I mean, at least to know what I'm looking as far as he can imagine.
And this is the only thing we have left.
Yeah, yeah, it's our only one.
And assuming we got a pump, there's a, there's a maintenance pump to pump it up to the top of it.
That's correct, and that's all in good working order, it's fairly, it's fairly new. The aeriator itself is not, but the, all of the other equipment's pretty, and I had it recently.
Jason gets to smell it every day. Alright, thank you, appreciate it. Yeah, thanks, Doc. As far as delegates for the TSBA, we got to have four, that's on that Saturday, November fifteenth, several of us sat through that, so we all done that. So we need four delegates. If, if you don't volunteer, we want to start just delegating. Do we have anybody to volunteer, Mr. Jenkins, Mr. Edwards?
I've done it before, so if someone else wants to.
It is pretty interesting to sit there, I'll probably sit there just to listen.
Yeah, even, I think last year you did, didn't you?
I did.
Yeah, so even if you don't, yeah. I like a little bingo paddle.
Mr. Gill, Mr. Jenkins, Mr. Edwards, and, and Mr. Gray. Got it? We don't need to vote on that, we, okay. Alright, thank you, appreciate that. And just so you know, we've done the calendar, Friday, you know, remember, the TSBA annual convention is coming up quickly, so that's November fourteenth. And then we have fall district meeting, that is the twenty-second. Is it, what time is that? Four thirty? Alright, do we have any other, any other business or anything? Do we have anything else?
I'd just like to say something, recognize nine eleven, I know it's been a while since that's happened, for sure. I read a profound thing today, but it said if we all felt like we did the twelfth, we'd be a lot better country. And so, yeah, it hit home for me, especially with a lot of things that happened over the last couple of days. And so anyway, I've, I've been in prayer all day for all them and their families and all that stuff, so I just wanted to make sure as, as a board, we recognize the, the eleven.
Appreciate that.
It's still.
Twenty-four years ago, you know exactly where you're at, and probably tomorrow, that day will be another turning point, you know, helping to, you know. But thank you for that, appreciate that. We'll have, we'll just, we can have a little side pray too, you know, for that, at the end of, when we get through, but you have something?
Yeah, I have one great detail. I know, past discussions, past go-mas, we've had discussed about our current legal representation. Might not be a great detail, but with that, I'd like to consider a motion that the board consider with our current, current relationships, consider seeking out new legal counsel or a new law firm to represent our interests at the board in the future.
So we have a motion on the floor, do we have a second for that? Go second on that? Alright.
This is something I could discuss.
Well, we get the motion on the floor, then we can discuss, so, but yes, we can, I think it's, I think we get the motion on the floor, we can discuss, so I think that's how we got to do it, but yes.
I brought it up last time, so I'll second.
Okay, second by Mr. Gill, so now we can discuss, so, yes, so, you have a question?
Yeah, I, I feel like there is some pause there. I, I agree with the way of our, we were represented through the course of this, so. I think that is a good idea, I mean, that's what.
Yeah, so, here's kind of the, here's kind of the, I did a little research just because, based off what Mr. Gill said in our last meeting and stuff. So, what we have to do is, if it's a, if it's a motion we undertake, and it's something we want to do, we have, we do have to inform the, the current attorneys that we are seeking other routes, right? And so we have several different options that we can go, so if it's, if it's something we want to look into is, is we really, we, we have somebody in mind, if there's a board attorney or something that we, that we already have in mind, we could actually have them come and interview with us. We can just do that process, that we say, aye, we want to go that route, or there's an RFQ process, so we have to put some qualifications together, an RFQ packet, and we would send that out. TSBA said that they would help with that if need be, or, or not. They would, you know, seek out, you know, to help put that, that RFQ package together. Maybe with the help of Dr. Combs and his team, they could bring that to us next month to, to look at those qualifications that we would have, and then seek out the attorney then. I know there are several that come to my mind, you know, at the, with, that, that represented TSBA and stuff, you know, I know there's several of those firms that are, you know, that are strictly, you know, are very geared to, you know, school board attorneys, so there, there are those out there. But that's kind of the route there is, if you had someone in mind, we can certainly bring them in, or we can go ahead and put the RFQ package out there and then have them. Now, it doesn't mean, you know, what Shields, Mr. Shields, Jackson?
Jackson, Shields, Jiser, Holt.
Yeah, it doesn't mean that they couldn't, you know, qualify as well and stuff, they might present as well, but that, that's the process there is that we could go through as a board. It's, it's either an RFQ process, put it out for bid, or bring money.
What is their specialty on?
Uh, employment.
And how long have they?
And like, Deborah is more the educational law piece, she used to be a teacher. So forty, yeah, because, yeah, because he was reminding us that he's been with us for forty, forty-one years. Steve?
Yes, Mr. Gill? Not to slow it down, and I'm glad you brought it up, because I was thinking it, but I realized something after I made that motion. Mine was towards arbitration too, by the way, and not total devastation. I have one as well in my, my walk of life, and that's my tool, and we were in the same sort of situation, and my board requested from me and my chairman, speed back, it's your tool. We don't get to use the tool all the time, we just hear information from the tool. And so I, I think as a request, and I wouldn't put it on a public forum either, I would request some information as far as how that, how well that tool's working for you guys.
Is it, yeah, is that something that you could share with them?
Sure.
As a, as a board, I can't.
I can't get prepared to do that, and, and keep this in mind, remember the dynamic, number one, absolutely, yes, I can do that. Remember the dynamic. The, the board attorney represents the board, right? So Jackson, Shields, Jiser, and Holt and Owen represent your nine folks. They represent me and the rest of the employees as long. They represent me and the rest of the employees as long as we're all in alignment, alright? So let's say that I went out and did something stupid this afternoon, and y'all are like, that guy's an idiot, we gotta get rid of him, right? Well, obviously they don't represent me. They represent you, so I would have to get my own attorney, right? Or if there's something that I'm trying to do on my own, that's like, you know, slander or something like that, that really doesn't involve the board, it just involves me, I would need to get my own attorney, right? And, and like Toss provides that for me too, the organization I'm in, superintendent, or, you know, I pay them, it's kind of like, you know, the paper. But remember, this person represents the board. So, um, you know, the input, I mean, I can be the, the tool. I can be, I'm trying to say.
It's like instruction back.
I can be a tool, man, that's not what I mean, so, um.
You do bring up a good point though, cause Blake can't really talk to us about it.
Not until right here, I couldn't right here.
Yeah, okay.
Correct, correct. So that's, and that's why I'm saying, I can get you all the stuff you need, but then ultimately, that decision is y'all's. And we, I only utilize that when it benefits the county, right? So obviously, if the county's in a lawsuit, or we're reading contracts, or there's some policy or legal matter that Doctor Bird or, or bookkeeping or anybody needs to have with them. That's fine, cause we're all aligned on it, but ultimately, they are the board's attorney. If that makes sense.
It's nothing, to me, it's nothing personal against the firm we got, Mr. Shields. I wasn't overly impressed with the presentation. I think there was a lack of urgency. I mean, we're nineteen days away from almost losing everything that we just got in that agreement. And that would have been detrimental to the kids. So, you know, I, I heard a lot of good faith, good faith, good faith, but like I pointed out, at some point when you're up against David and Goliath. You gotta take the kid's gloves off, gotta get in the transfer of the name. I think we need someone that's gonna see a sense of urgency and be a lot more aggressive. Heaven forbid this happens again, or something similar. We don't need to cut it this close again, I don't think, so that's just where I, that's, that's my stance on it.
Any other questions, Mr. Gil?
I, I'm just new to the board, so predominantly over the years, what have we used the attorney for other than insurance?
Well, lawsuits, we've been.
It's part of the jewel lawsuit, wasn't it?
Yep, it's the jewel, that, really, that was, we used them to contact another attorney to be involved in that. But like, you know, the breach, you know, that happened like, what, twelve years ago, whatever that was, they were that. And there's, there's constant, I mean, Doctor Bird could tell you, I mean, she uses, she probably uses our attorney as much as anybody does. And it's for, it could be things from licensure to this person is upset because they weren't hired back, or they weren't. It's constant stuff like that, but it's a lot of, um, not appearing in court kind of stuff. It's mostly contractual, that, yeah, like, make sure whenever we engage that we're doing it correctly, that we're giving the proper due process if we have to dismiss someone, you know, those kind of things. But I mean, do you have anything to add to that? You probably use her especially, buddy.
Contracts, um, a lot of policy and contracts, but H R issues as well. I would say those are probably the three things. Some, some written communication to make sure that the right message, um, is, is put out there in certain situations, that's.
Tell, tell them a little bit about the current, the current, the Attorney General wanted us to look into. What was the one that we got that we're supposed to be looking into that all districts are?
Yes, so right now we're working with our attorney. Uh, we were contacted for some information from the Attorney General. To potentially participate in the lawsuit against, uh, four major textbook companies. And, uh, so we're trying to gather, Will's trying to gather now, um, how much money we've, we've paid to these, uh, textbook publishers these last three years. It's a, it's a large amount of money, it's a large, I'm sorry. Yeah, starting at three years, up to five years. So that's what we're working with them on currently. That was as of today.
And we're already at what, just between, just under three million?
Yeah, two point eight million.
That we've spent with these folks, that, that information came to us from the Attorney General to say, all, to all the districts, start looking into this, because there may be something here to this. And so obviously, we're using our attorneys for that. But it's, it's mostly stuff like that.
Sometimes press releases, um, if it's a sensitive nature, especially if it involves, uh, personnel. Sometimes I'll have them review it before we publicize it, just to make sure that we handled it appropriately. Not, not out of press releases, but sometimes when it's a sensitive nature.
Didn't you have to use them pretty heavily on during the COVID?
Uh, to make sure wording was correct, and it aligned with executive orders and all that kind of stuff, yes.
Are they under contract?
Yes.
Through?
Is that a yearly contract?
You know, I, I don't even know. It's been like, kind of like the insurance was. I've never known us not to have them, you know, that's what, I'm in my thirty-third year. They've always been our attorney. That's, that's all I remember.
It's just never been looked at or brought.
Yeah, and I would say, I think.
I think this mid-most recent thing.
Deborah, Deborah, Deborah did a fantastic job. I, I mean, she did a fan, and she talks, Deborah did a fantastic job through all this. I mean, that, we, you know, she, I was right there, we were watching it, she did a great job. I just, I, I, I do agree, I do agree is that we just about. Just about, in my opinion. And now, now, that's not an everyday thing, you know, also this is something that's unique, and maybe if we did this again, maybe we, maybe we seek additional help on the, on the, on the, I don't know. But I, 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 I feel the, I mean, I, I, I'm kind of feel the need as well, this is probably about time to maybe at least seek that option, but.
I will say this as, uh, you don't hire an attorney for the best cases. You hire the attorney for the worst cases, right? You want to see what your attorney can do when it's the worst case and you really need him. I mean, if everybody was super nice, we could have just done it ourselves. I mean, so, you, you, that's, that's when you need it, so, yeah.
Yeah. So is it just an hourly, I mean, is that how we're billed, is not, as we use them?
Yes, sir.
So if we were to switch.
We get that statement, like, why some month? Once a month?
That's what I'm saying, it's, it's not like we're under our contract that we're putting it out to bid, and all of the terms will be an hourly fee.
Correct. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. The only, the only other, and I was checking, um, with somebody on this, is, you know, some districts have a staff attorney. And there's a difference between a staff attorney and a board attorney, which I would need to talk to somebody about, cause I don't know that well enough. But I do know that there are some who have a staff attorney, like, um, you know, Arlington, like, some of those schools up there actually share a staff attorney. Like, that attorney is at every board meeting. I mean, they're all, they're at every board meeting, uh, stuff like that, you know? And so while I'm, uh, checking into this, um, I can look at that too and see, you know, I, I don't know if at the end of the day, the cost for something like that wouldn't equal out if we're not. I mean, I, I don't know, I, I have no idea, but I can check with the other superintendents to do that kind of thing and to see what, what that would look like. I don't mind doing that either.
Well, it's not every day you lose two schools and have to fight like we've had to fight.
It's, you're right.
So, it's definitely a special circumstance.
So I'd say, go ahead.
I'm sorry, we, we maybe talk to some neighboring schools to see like, um, who is it that they use?
Yeah, agreed. So I think the motion on the floor is not to, we're not, the motion on the floor is not to get rid of our current attorney. It's, it's, the motion on the floor is to consider additional other, uh, new board, you know, to put the R F Q out or something, to, to look at a different, uh, route at this point. It may come back to, that we don't agree on, and then we come back to Jackson Shield and Walker. Y'all, is that, is that how y'all understand the motion, or?
Is that for me to look into, like, to do some digging into that and report back?
I think that's the way it would say it, yes, is, is what, what, what attorneys are out there. That we, that might be beneficial for our district, but also is, is what, what might an R F Q look like as well? That we can put before the board, that we can prove. Is that fair enough, board?
Yeah, and I think the feedback, maybe you just tell us what attributes you two want, or you guys want, or you look for.
Okay.
Instead of.
Like character qualities?
I got you.
What, what is it that will help you?
Own station.
Yeah.
For our board and for the board of the district as a whole, right? Alright, well, the motion on the floor, so all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? The motion passed. Any other business tonight? You have a discussion, anything? If not, then, uh, let's, uh, before we adjourn, let's, uh, let's just have a moment of silence and then, and then we'll just, uh. Mister Vale, you wanna just, uh, I tell you, Mister Gil, you brought it up, you wanna just pray for our nine eleven victims? And just, just in general, just kind of our state of America?
To the point.
Let's just have a, let's just have a, let's have a moment of silence and then we'll just pray for that, is that okay?
Lord Jesus, thank you for bringing us all here tonight, Lord, safely, Lord, uh, allowing us to exercise those freedoms that this government allows us to do, Lord. Lord, uh, thank you for watching over all of those families and loved ones that years ago, uh, they lost their loved ones on this day, Lord. Lord, I pray that, uh, your healing hands are on them every day, Lord, and those families that are still dealing with pain and suffering, Lord. I pray for all those that are dealing with pain and suffering right now, uh, in, in this, uh, country that we live in, and the things we've gone through in the past couple of days and past couple of months and years, Lord. I, I just pray for healing in this country. I, I pray for healing in families, I pray for schools, workplaces, Lord, I, I just, Lord, we need you more than any, a- a- anything right now, Lord, to, to help us intervene and, uh, your guidance, Lord. We just thank you so much, and, uh, we thank you how you love us so much, Lord, and, uh, it's your name we pray, amen.
Amen, thank you, appreciate it. We have a motion to adjourn, motion number Mister Vale, second motion Mister Vale. All in favor, say aye. Motion passed.